Counselor Tirina?
Here.
Counsel President Stickley.
Yeah.
We have six members present. We have a board.
You still eating your coffee?
Counselors had time to review the prior meeting minutes from a long time ago. Do you have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Council President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We have our WRA representatives Matt Netti and Hugo Barajas and Shelley. I almost said your maiden name, I'm so sorry, Borton. And it was just asked by counsel to come forward with some information on the Tines tournaments and kind of go over the budget. Thank you for bringing that in with you. And we'll start off with Matt.
No, I'll join if you'd like.
Yeah. It'd be better because we have to get questions for...
So, yes, we were asked to come up and talk again via email from Mr. Chamberlain to Mr. Torbett. It was forwarded to me to talk about the interest of counsel as far as just tournaments in general at Biddle Park and specifically the Tines tournament. We, I did pass along to you a QuickBooks kind of breakdown of everything that goes in and comes out of of running that tournament. So, I know that's a lot there and if we need to get specifics on that, we'll be glad to do so. The way things work in our office as far as something, an event like this, or just in general, I mean, I write the checks and I spend the money. And Hugo down the hall, again, just so we have some form of a check and balance, you know, system in our office to make sure everything's kept track of as best we can, he takes that information and then runs the QuickBooks for everything that we do. So, each, you know, individual tournament in this case is entered in and obviously there's a lot there. So, again, I don't know what specific questions you may have. If you want me to talk about just tournaments at Biddle Park in general, I'll be glad to do so. Or if we just want to specifically talk about Tines in this case, we can.
We had some confusion. It came up one, at one meeting, I think the mayor wasn't in attendance that day. And we were told, we were passing on some information, it was some communication. It was kind of like, we had this tournament, it went really well, but we didn't make any money. So, it was kind of, we didn't really know what that meant. It was kind of like, yay, you know, the tournament went really well, the guys did a great job, but we didn't make any money. So, I guess we didn't know, you know, why, or is this something we want to? Like, in our view, we want to support having tournaments and having events and supporting the park. So, you know, when we approve money spent there, we just kind of wanted to know, okay, it went really well, but we didn't make any money. So, you know, what's the disconnect or what can we do? You know, so if you have suggestions, or I guess I would like to know what, is there anything about this that you want us to notice or point out?
Can I add to that? I was at the meeting when we talked about WRA money and tournaments and paying at the end of the year a percentage because we actually had legislation done for like the utilities and things like that. And I think that is a discussion. Yes, that's what I want to be very clear on. As a city, that is something that the city has made legislation on, not on the WRA profits and stuff like that. So, I just want to make myself clear that, you know, I probably was not at that meeting. I think I do remember when it was discussed. So, go ahead and answer more questions.
First thing is, I mean, in the vein of being a nonprofit organization, which is what we are at the heart of it, we price and try to make things at the end of the day, whether it's a tournament or whether it's flag football or whatever it is, we're not in the business of making money per se. I mean, there's money that needs to be made to operate, but by the end of that, when those operations and uniforms and umpires and officials are paid for, really the idea is that there is, there's little left over.
It was also a little confusing with this, with this, we didn't know if that meant the city, you know, was in one circumstance and the WRA was in another circumstance. You know what I mean? There was a disconnect.
Well, there is a disconnect, I mean, always for me because you've got this kind of set up to where we have the, we have the city and we have this organization, the WRA, and how those two things kind of jive and operate together. There's always a little bit of a disconnect, you know, for me. I mean, Hugo and I are employees of the City of Waseon. So, obviously, we have responsibilities and oversight to Mr. Torbett and Mayor Huner on what we do on a daily basis. But how those two things kind of jive, when you talk about utilities, I don't, you know, that's a part of it for me that I, I don't really, I don't know how much it costs to run the lights for three nights at Biddle Park for a tournament. So, I don't know how that affects kind of the overall bottom line. Whether I should or shouldn't, I just, I just don't. So, and Keith and I have talked, we talk about this and I know that's a factor for the city when you're running a park and we're hosting tournaments there and there's costs that are over and above what, you know, what you see here.
And I think that's, that's the legislation I'm talking about.
Yes.
It didn't pertain to profits of WRA. It pertained to usage of when a tournament comes in. That's the legislation that was made. And then at the end of the year, there was a percentage that needed to be met for utilizing the park, the supplies if needed in the bathrooms and stuff like that. It wasn't about how much each tournament made. It was at the end of the year. And I think that, according to minutes, that was brought to WRA. And I don't know if you remember the discussion and they said, yes, that they felt that that was fair, came back up to counsel and then counsel agreed to go ahead with that. And I think at one time at the end of the year, it's only been a couple of years since we moved on this. So, whether that was happening or not was my question because I know that that was just discussion that we had. And that was purely a percentage of the profit from all tournaments, not just this one, this one, that one. So, that's different. And in the past, I will be very honest, I mean, when we did WR meetings, and I just discussed this again with Matt, it's always been the representatives from counsel go down, they have a meeting, minutes are made, the minutes go to them, they report back to counsel. They represent the city at the WRA meeting. There's always a budget report on those meetings so that they can bring that back. And then if counsel has a question, I mean, it's not per se, the WRA money is not city money. It's WRA money. Their tournaments, it's their profits. But we have the right question, like, you know, the things that are happening down there, we, you know, we get complaints or something, that's when it goes back. And that's up to the representatives to make sure that we get those minutes, that we are seeing what's happening. But to be fair, I know you guys have lost a president.
Yeah, and again, with all, with all due respect, the last, again, I'm going to guess here a little bit, the last two or three WRA meetings that we've had, there hasn't been any representation there from who's supposed to be there, from counsel or the park board. So, so there's a little bit of a disconnect there. I know, again, from when I came into the room today and spoke with Harold and Kathy about who's the representatives are supposed to be and so...
Jeremy and Harold?
Myself.
Okay.
And then park board is Larry Zimmerman.
Yeah.
But the big, one big problem is notification of when the meetings are going to be. Don't get them.
I've never got one.
And two, one of the big things like Sarah brought up was because of what I brought up. Because what Mayor gave me, because the mayor was out of town and she gave me that we had a Tines tournament and it was X number of games, X number of teams, everything went really well, blah, 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 but we didn't make any money.
Well, they didn't make any money, Harold. It's not our money, it's theirs. It's WRA money.
We didn't know who didn't make money. It was just the city or the, you know what I mean? We didn't, that wasn't clear just because we didn't have anybody to ask.
Forty-two. Forty-two? What was the entry fee?
Some of us.
For teams, the eight U entry fee was $250 a team and everything up from there was $300 a team. Three hundred everybody else. So, nine U all the way through ponies, that's fourteen U, is $300 a team. Again, we, you get back to, you know, we kind of price that that way. I think that has a big reason and a big effect on why we get forty-two teamed as opposed to thirty-two or twenty-two. We could certainly increase that, that fee and make some more money. But I think that would affect that number of forty-two probably fairly quickly. And so, yes, could we charge more money? Yes, I think some of these teams...
What's the average tournament fee usually run?
Well, and again, it depends. With this, with this influence and this ever-growing other kind of side of things, our, the Tines tournament is a recreation-based tournament. This is not club baseball and so, or travel, true travel baseball. So, all these kids that come from wherever they're coming from are all from that community. And that's kind of the spirit that kind of drives this tournament and makes this still kind of special, a little bit different from other tournaments that are out there is that this is all a community-based, rec-based team. So, forty-two teams, if you're coming from Bellevue, Ohio, all your kids are from Bellevue, Ohio. It's not a club deal. Reason I mention that, I think it's worth mentioning is because, yes, there are, there are other tournaments out there that are just kind of open, so to speak, to whoever wants to come. And if you have a, and again, even right here in our town, I mean, if All In is not able to play in this tournament because they have two kids from Waseon and three from here and four from there. So, that's kind of the, again, a big part of what Tines is and what makes it kind of special and different is that they are all community-based teams. And again, I think that leads into, these teams are used to paying not five, six, seven hundred dollars to get in a baseball tournament where these club organizations are used to that. So, I think that's why, again, we've kept the price where it's at. And again, that, but at the end of the day, that's, you know, why we, again, if you go, if you go through that, when you start slicing everything away, there's not a lot left by the end of it. The other thing too, I think I mentioned too, back to what Mayor Huner said to begin with, we need to distinguish between a tournament that's being organized and run by Hugo and I as opposed to an outside entity coming in and renting the fields. Whereas the WRA is not paying the city to rent the fields per se. And again, that goes back to that kind of relationship that, again, the WRA to me is a City of Waseon thing. I know it's this kind of separate entity, but it is really in the vein of your employees of the City of Waseon, of the Recreation Department are putting this thing together, which takes an enormous amount to organize and gather up forty-two teams is a six, eight, ten-week process to get it really put together and to pull it off. So, so, yeah, there's a difference between, again, I think what, to make that distinction between we are running and organizing this tournament as opposed to an outside group coming in that's, that's coming in to pay and rent the fields where there is more of a bottom line left over when we're not paying the umpires, we're not paying our concession workers, we're not paying for all the supplies and so on and so forth, so...
And when I read that, that was not put in, that when we're running our own tournament, why would we charge our own kids to pay? They've already paid into play.
And we don't charge, sorry, yeah, we don't charge, like, in this case, we don't charge our own teams. We have our own eight U, nine U, ten U, and they participate in the tournament without paying that $300 team fee. We just feel like they've already kind of paid their, their part to kind of be there.
Okay, so they do get a break already?
They do get a break already, yep, in this, in this case, yep.
How do we know that these teams like from Bellevue, that all the kids are from Bellevue?
Well, I mean, we do, I mean, do we, do we know? No, but we know, we know. I mean, we, that's, that's very clear when you send the registration in, it's very clear on the form that all your kids need to be the same, to be from the same community. Every now and again, a question comes up, but it's rare. So, we, we feel like we know. I mean, we're not checking birth certificates and checking IDs on the way in. But we do, I suppose, reserve that, that right if there's a question, whether it's a question of, are you from there? And it has come up, but it's, and it's rare as, along with what, what your age is. I mean, you get some twelve-year-old boys out there that look like they're sixteen. And so, we, you know, we do kind of reserve that right to question that and ask for some proof. But I don't think that's, that's ever, that's never really an issue. I suppose it has come up from time to time in the seven years that we've been doing this together anyway, so...
We, we have discussed so many times, so I feel comfortable saying this from our perspective, is that we like the idea of having tournaments as it brings people into the city. So, from the city's perspective, it's a great thing for our community and we want to support that. And so, you know, having a good relationship is, I think, needed for that so that we can continue to support tournaments and all the, you know, it brings to our local economy.
I think that's, again, the probably the biggest economic benefit of the whole thing is to showcase the park, which is an amazing, beautiful park. It's really truly a one of a kind. I mean, I've followed my kids around. We get all kinds of comments on the park, the way the tournament is run and the work that goes into it and, you know, the businesses that benefit from having, you know, people, hotels, restaurants, people are filling up their tanks with gas and so on and so forth and get back and forth. So, there's a, it's hard to measure, obviously, what that exact benefit is. But there's, there's a huge economic and a PR benefit from, from hosting these tournaments, yep. Yep.
I had one question, I don't know if anyone else does, but are the, I noticed there's not really a, any concessions on here. Do you track concessions and sales?
I can answer that. So, the concession stand runs from April through July and it's like their own little business, I would say. They, my, we have two concession stand managers and they track everything. What they buy, what they sell, how much they come in. So, it's like its own little thing. It just happened to be running during the Tines tournament. See what I'm saying? It just happens to be open and it's, obviously, they do very well. So, that's why it's not reflected on here because it's really their own, their own little...
Does that come at the end of the year then?
Yes, like they, again, they pretty much broke even at the end of the season. It's just, just crazy how that just happens, you know? Even considering this, this weekend alone, they probably brought in like nine grand, you know?
Have you changed any of your budget on that and considered towards your teams that come in, especially the Tines? I know that the homecoming had leftover food and they brought that in to sell because they had a lot of leftover sandwiches and stuff. And, but my question is, I mean, the food is a lot more right now. It costs a lot more and that's going to have to be flipped back into our teams.
And then we gave the workers a raise this summer, both the op, scoreboard operators and the concession stand. We've each got a dollar raise. So, that also affected their bottom line.
I mean, I just see that happening and I can see if a concession stand should make money, always should be making money. That's just my input. Again, it's not coming out of our account, but yet that's something that probably needs to be looked at as the cost of everything and how much it's gone up to be able to...
Yeah, the labor and the cost of good soul is just, just crazy.
Trying to keep the employees...
And my managers were both very diligent with, if the park, if the day was slow at the park, they would send the workers home. You're going to be here, it's slow, you know, we'll see you tomorrow, whatever the case may be. So, because I stress that, I go, look, when you're paying them more, you got to be busy or else we're going to send them home.
So, my question is, are you, you were not aware that these two were the representatives for the WRA?
I wouldn't s...
Who, Harold? I thought Harold was...
I wouldn't say that, again, I guess my, my question is, I didn't know if there had been some changes because of the fact that, that they weren't... Now, again, some of that is the effect of Zach Riley, who was the true former acting president, resigned quite some time ago. Jason Robinson, who was the vice president, stepped in and was kind of our acting president for the next several meetings. He was reluctant to take, truly take on the president's position. So, we, we conducted meetings just kind of, you know, with, with that in mind. And then Jason decided to step, step away a couple of months ago as well, which, you know, we were not expecting. So, and that happened, you know, it's a busy time. So, and in that event, then it kind of falls, to some degree, this all kind of falls back on, on me to, again, in the absence of a president, like, who's going to organize, who's going to call and order, you know, order these, these meetings? So, and so, again, we have a meeting organized now for later this month. That took a little bit of time to obviously figure out who's, who's going to organize this meeting and move forward. So, we are fully prepared to move, to move forward and look to fill that, fill that vacancy that's there.
And we've had the same thing up here. I mean, we've had changes up here, new people up here, we've added administration that I keep thinking there are places we never, you know, contacted, you know, lost my administrative assistant. And it's, it's hard to think, oh, they're just going to get it. They don't and we forget to tell them. So, that's our fault as well.
And again, that's why I will make sure, you know, going forward that, you know, when we have meetings that, again, I'll take it upon myself to make sure that everybody's notified as well as...
Yeah, when you get, when you're going to do a meeting, notify Corinne.
Mm-hmm.
And then Corinne can notify Jeremy and my, so...
My, my reluctance there is into organize meetings and to be too much of a part of the person that's running or organizing or setting agendas for this meeting is that my understanding and my feelings is that myself and this board need to be kind of two separate things. If I'm filling the board and running the meetings, then there's really no kind of check on me. I mean, if there's something that I'm doing or that I shouldn't be doing, I...
That's where these guys...
Sure, yep.
Are there people in the wings that you think you have in mind that would take on the president?
Yeah, that I do. And I've asked the, you know, still existing members of the board when we get together the next time to bring some, some names to the table. These are, I mean, the people that are still on this board, I mean, Shelley Borton, Julian Delgado, Eric Simon and Hope Wood, these are, these are good, good people. And we have done a lot. I felt like, you know, when Zach, when I came on board and then Zach came on board six years ago, there wasn't a lot going on with, with that board and a lot has gotten accomplished, I feel like, in these last several years to kind of move things forward and be better organized and better on top of things. And so, I feel great about the people that are in that room. And again, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of reorganize here these things, especially with Jason. No, no ill will towards Jason whatsoever. He just felt like his, his plate was very full and just didn't feel like he was able to kind of fulfill the responsibilities and what it, what it took to really, to do this the right way. So, so, yeah, we'll actively make sure that we get that position filled and move forward.
So, on your spreadsheet, it shows a deposit of $20,800 and also $18,750. And then the cost factor come to $24,250, is that correct, man?
Where are you at also, Harold?
He's one, two, three, four, fifth one.
It says Tines gate fees and then you've got a balance on the right of $20,812. Did you, I don't know, who made the spreadsheet out?
I'm referring to Hugo because like I explained at the beginning, yeah, I mean, when it comes to the QuickBooks, I mean, that, that breakdown is, I mean, this is entered with...
Yeah, I'm just, so we got that and then the other deposits and entry fees total is $18,750. And then, but the total expenses then ended up to be, it looks like $24,250 and change, right? So, you've still got a balance of good money?
I'm following up, what's, what's the question?
The question is, is that, is that the spreadsheet, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the Tines gate took in $11,737, but then you take away the $1,300 starting cash. That's how you get your...
Ten thousand.
Your $10,437.
I just looked at the balance on the right, we have top and balance.
I feel like when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at a bottom line of where, when everything that was deposited and everything was sliced away, there was little over $3,000 left.
What are the umpires paid again?
For the pony umpires, again, when I say pony, I'm referring to the thirteen and fourteen-year-old divisions. Those umpires are paid $65 a game and everybody else is paid $60 a game. That's a fairly, that's a fairly going rate. I mean, these games take a couple of hours or close to. And not just in my own personal, but my experience with this too, these tournaments are only as good as your umpires. If you want to not have problems at the end of the day and not have issues constantly with your tournament, I mean, you, you have to get good umpires and Hugo does a great job of, of getting umpires, getting good umpires. And it probably maybe to some, that sounds like a crazy amount to pay an umpire, but that's, again, that's, that's a fairly going...
That's really reasonable.
That's a fairly, that's a fairly going rate for...
What's your admission charge?
We charge $5 per day. If you want to pay just a per day admission, we pay, we charge $5. Or you can buy a weekend pass for 10, which essentially gets you in for three days because the tournament starts on a Friday night. So, if you come in on Friday night and pay $10, you're, you're good for the weekend. Or you can pay $5 per day. We don't, we don't, we don't, we only charge adults, yep. So, seventeen and under, get in for, for free.
Children make up at the concession stand?
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully, they buy a lot of suckers and...
Okay, so what, I mean, I think that's really cheap. That's cheap. I'm thinking...
My field hockey games, it's eight bucks, you know, across the board.
We occasionally get somebody that, you know, I can't believe you're charging us, but it's, that's, that's about one...
I think that's cheap.
That's one hundred million. The other thing, back to your point too, I mean, we, you know, as far as the concessions and it being only kind of basically a break even at the end of the day, we probably could and should charge more for a hot dog and a, and a Gatorade. You know, again, it's hard to get away from charging a buck for a candy bar, but candy bars cost a buck these days.
Yes, they do.
They do. When you want to buy forty-eight Snicker bars at Sam's, it's $48. So, there could be probably some increases in concession prices. There has been, I mean, you can't go to McDonald's for less than 12 bucks for lunch anymore. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's, so that's something we can look at. Again, we wanted to pay our people a little bit more, again, to make sure that we've got, you know, the best people that we can have them, you know, have there. So, but we, we could probably increase our concession costs a little bit so that maybe at the end of the day, there's a little bit left over there as far as, you know, that goes as opposed to just, to just breaking, breaking...
How many games a day do you run?
We played eighty, eighty games in three days.
For $5, just explain they get to watch eighty games.
Well, you could, yeah. I mean, if you weren't just worried about just watching your own child play, yeah. It's a lot, it's a lot of baseball games in, in three days, yeah. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot of baseball games in, in three days, yeah.
Well, I, I just would like to see, um, like, when you guys do have meetings, we as council, um, by Thursday, Corinne has put the agenda together and if they were at a meeting prior to that, if those minutes could get to them, then these guys can give a report to council on what's going on. That, that to me is very important because then if they do have questions of something that maybe happened and the public comes to them and they're asking them questions, maybe that was also discussed at your meeting, but we don't have that clue. So that is just something, I think it dropped years ago where those minutes got back to the representatives from council. Um, and on that, you have the, your budget report. So you can kind of, you can see what's coming in and out during some of the, like, the softball tournaments and the baseball tournaments, soccer, whatever you guys run, um, like, or anything. It'd be nice, they can see that. Okay, this did well. You know, this, not so good. So, it's just.
Well, Scott and I used to go and Tom showed up different times.
I know Scott used to go quite a bit.
So, but it's just only been the last year or so, actually since Zach resigned.
Yeah.
And I was there when Jason was there a couple, three times. But can't make the meeting if you don't know what it is.
Understood.
So anything I can ask is, when, when the WRA is going to be, and they, and they canceled a few. So just make sure that Corinne knows when the meeting's gonna be, what night, what morning, whenever, and then she can notify us, okay?
Does that by email?
But that, um, yeah, so just, so just run that through Corinne, yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so I, I can say, so, so Sunday, September twenty ninth at seven P M. is the, um, is the next meeting. We'll do that out at Biddle Park. If there's a change in venue, we, we have at times gone to Rotary to meet. Um, it's a little bit.
Your place on the twenty ninth?
Yes.
What time?
Seven o'clock. P M.
Do you guys have a copy of the legislation that was passed? I think, wasn't it twenty twenty?
I did. I handed it, I thought I handed it out to you guys.
Yeah, we got that, that meeting. I didn't know if they had the copy of it.
They should.
Uh, yeah, I have a copy of it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, Zach, yeah, Zach, yep, yep. I worry, yeah, Corinne reached out to me and asked me to get that and I, I got that through, through Zach and so.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Yep.
How many weekends did we have tournaments out there?
We had tournaments out there, well, we had tournaments out there three weekends. We had, we had a fourth tournament planned. We had a softball tournament planned, the weekend of, um, of homecoming. And we made the decision on Thursday to not do that because of, um, the extreme heat that was well on that week. Um, we, we, it was, if you remember, it was ninety five to almost a hundred degrees that whole week. Um, we played games out there that entire week. Um, by every day, it was a little bit of, I felt like we were pushing the envelope, maybe a little bit further than we should. And, um, Thursday evening, we had a couple of kids that left the park feeling very ill from the heat. And so, um, we decided on Friday that it was probably best that we didn't go through with the tournament.
Was that our tournament?
Yes. It was a tournament that we had organized and put on. We ran a small wiffle ball tournament. We're trying, Hugo had a good idea of, um, trying to run a wiffle ball tournament out there, um, that we did in July. We just didn't get that many teams for it. Um, so that was, there was that as well.
Volleyball. I see a lot of volleyball.
We did, we had, we had sand volleyball out there during homecoming.
Well, they, they have been continually playing.
Yeah, and we, we had a league, yeah, we developed a league as well. So there was, there was actual, um, you know, week, week by week league out there, but we ran a tournament. Uh, we ran a three on three basketball tournament out there, um, the weekend of homecoming. Um, so yes, yep. I know it's not what we're talking about. We run a couple of basketball tournaments in the, uh, in the winter time through the, through the school as well, girls and boys, fifth and sixth grade basketball tournaments that we run through the school as well. Um, so, yes.
I did see Friday night of homecoming, there was a baseball game played out there. So it was okay for baseball to go forward, though?
We didn't play baseball on Friday night.
Uh, Friday we did, but not, not the weekend. It was a night game, so it's a lot cooler.
Yeah.
So we were, we felt that we were okay with that one.
And, and what, what we see here, Matt, is a spreadsheet from the WRA. It's not the city's spreadsheet, right?
Correct, yeah.
So this is just WRA money?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, during the operation of the Tiny's tournament, were you out there?
Yes.
Hugo, I'm sure you were out there.
I was.
These are.
And that's not, and, and you're right, Shane, that's not reflected in there too, and Hugo brought that up.
Right. We, our salaries are not in here. We're out there, whatever, four, fifteen hour days.
And I'm sure you had field prep crews out there.
Mm-hmm.
And those aren't, those aren't listed here as well.
Correct.
So the city, the city bears some cost, you know, operating the tournament. Uh, and did we rent the fields to the WRA?
No.
No? Not, I would say that they are a outside entity. Have you ever rented the fields to anybody before?
Shane, the WRA is not an outside entity. The WRA was formed.
No, they sure are, they sure are outside.
The City of Waseon's recreational program.
We have, we have no, no, Keith, we have no influence over them.
No.
We have no influence.
You have, you have two representatives.
And let me tell you what their role is. I know this better than you, I'm sorry, but let me tell you what their role is. Their role is to simply sit there and observe them.
That's right.
They have no voting authority.
That's right.
All they are, are a relayer of information.
That's right.
Zero influence.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Because this is a nonprofit organization for Waseon recreational sport.
Of which we have zero influence over. The only people.
The council has zero influence over. You're absolutely right.
The only people that we have influence over is Hugo and Matt. And their staff. Right? WRA can do whatever they want and tell us to go pound sand.
They could.
They could, right? So when we, when we have an expense, like you guys and your field prep crews, wouldn't it be nice to, to recoup some of those expenses by renting the fields to that third party?
Well, yeah, I think you're, I think you're renting the fields to, to people that are members of the community that are, are paying to be part of our programs. I, I feel like it's almost kind of double dipping on them a little bit to where these kids are, again, they're, they're members of the community. So, are we, we also run flag football on Tuesday night. So should they be paying a fee to the city as well to rent the fields on Tuesday night to play a flag football game?
It's a great question. I mean, is it operated by the WRA?
Yes.
Yeah, so you, you might want to consider that because you're, because it's an outside entity.
Okay, that's, that's, I suppose that's, that's probably for you all to decide. I mean, I, I don't know how you distinguish between what you were saying and what I said. Again, if we're, if we're using, we're using the fields right now to play travel soccer games and flag football games, so literally anybody that steps on the grounds out there should have to pay a fee.
Anything operated by the WRA, we have no say over.
Yep. Well, if you have no say over it, then you've, you've invited me to be here today and I'm, and I'm here. So you, you have say in that way.
Yeah, you.
Did Tiny's have to pay any sort of a sponsorship fee?
Tiny's did pay a sponsor. You mean Tiny's to have their name on the tournament? Yes. Yep, yep. They pay us a, it's a small fee, but they pay us a small fee to, to call it Tiny's, yeah.
How much?
Five hundred dollars.
And is that representative of the W, the WRA money or?
That is not in there. I mean, you're, no, you're right.
Wow, okay. So if I can wrap my, so Chelsea Arabia is paid to be the, the tournament director, uh, by the WRA. So she's operating the tournament.
She is operating.
You describe yourself as operating the tournament.
She's running the, she's running the software that keeps track of game results for the weekend. So every time a game ends and that's updated, um, and the information is updated on an app that we use to keep people updated on who won, are you gonna play on Sunday, if you won your so and so forth. So Chelsea, Chelsea takes care of that for us.
Did the city, uh, retain the proceeds of the concession stand?
Did the city? No.
The city. That went to WRA as well?
Yes.
The gated admission, did we retain? Did the city retain any of those? Now, when I travel around and, and, and visit all these parks and pay these fees to enter these parks, I always see every year improvements in those parks. And I have to believe those improvements are tied to those fees to enter those events. So what I've learned is that when somebody hosts a tournament, they normally reap the benefit of the gate fee and concession stand. But we're not getting either of those. So how do we improve upon our product, Biddle Park, if we're not reaping any benefit from hosting the event?
Well, you, you, again, you're gonna have to, I just come to an agreement with the WRA and say, you're gonna have to pay us for using these fields for this tournament.
Which is very difficult for me to even think about because the people of this city are the ones helping pay your fees, helping pay for anything that's out there. The people are paying for that. And to go and say, okay, now we're gonna have this WRA league, which was created for the kids of this community. And since then, this whole thing of years of expanding and having all of these tournaments and you've got all of your little sub, uh, committees and now they want to make money and everything else. I don't know, and I agree with Shane, people pay, but then not every one of those fields are created by the public. Those, some of them are private. And when that happens, that is people, you can shake your head. I know there are some that are. They're not all paid by the citizens or the community. But what I'm gonna say is.
The citizens of Kokomo.
Do we want, let me finish my thought. When, do we want the kids who, I mean, I know people who have paid in the past, sitting on the WRA board for like ten years, I know that there are people who cannot play. And they, we set fees for the children of Waseon to pay and play. And the more you pay, like, if you're on a, uh, travel team, you're gonna pay more because it costs more. Because that's how it was created. Before it was just recreational. But kids who want to play recreational, they pay a certain fee. Why? Because to me, it's their parents, their grandparents, their great grandparents that help pay for not only this park, our soccer fields, our football fields. I mean, I helped start the midget football. I know what it costs to start that. That was created so that our kids could play. With that being said, the WRA was long before us. They created that. They took the money from the recycling center and created the WRA. If we no longer want the people in this community to allow their kids to pay, I don't know what it is anymore, to be on a recreational.
Well, again, if you're gonna play, if you're gonna want to be on a, on a first and second grade flag football team, um, and pay forty dollars as opposed to, if you're gonna say all of a sudden we gotta pay sixty or eighty dollars, you, you, you're.
They're gonna, no, it's gonna, I mean, you're just.
It's, it's gonna affect, it's gonna affect.
They're gonna go, they're gonna go play and pay somebody else out of Toledo to coach their teams and, and we're done with WRA. But until that happens, I mean, to me, uh, when I see other villages running, they have their own committee, whether it be their director and their committee or whatever. But I've never seen where, I mean, we will never agree. We have people coming in and out. I don't know how the city could even make decisions on what teams, what the cost is gonna be and everything else. That has to be something totally separate.
I think it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty slippery slope if you're gonna say, we're gonna charge eighty dollars now to play flag football because we have to pay the city in order for your kid to come out and use.
Exactly. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push that. But when teams come in and they profit from the tournament that they're running, and I know that those fees are, are high when you have, um, those, the traveling teams or whatever, they're high. But they, they're playing. They're, they're a higher level of players and they're gonna pay for that, whether it be baseball, softball, or.
And they're, they're used to that. I mean, those teams are used to paying six, seven.
Soccer teams that did that and they went elsewhere and they played. Now we're gonna come back. And I remember when the FCA was very furious that we questioned them to pay because they, most of those kids were from Waseon. Well, you're not playing on our leagues. And that, we gave them that answer. The leagues are less because these are the people from Waseon that paid for this team, or this, all of this. They're paying their taxes for this. Not everybody on the FCA was from Waseon. That was one of the reasons. And a lot of them were our, that was our own Waseon, you know, um, thing, A's same way. Um, that, that's a private organization. I don't, we have no control over that. So it's just always gonna be, um, as long as we have an employee. Now, to me, I'm about ready to say put the employee down from WRA or we try to figure something else out. But somehow, um, the city needs to understand that the money that comes in, that they're paying for their Joe Johnny to play, goes to the WRA. You guys manage that money, you take care of that money and you have your meetings. We own the field. We, we pay you guys. And yeah, that is a cost, just like it is when we have to pay our policemen to man the homecoming and man the chili festivals and man every parade and every five K. We don't get paid for that. That comes out of our budget.
I just, I think you have, I think you have a park and you have fields out there that are owned and operated by the city and it costs money to do that. Uh, you know, I mean, so.
I would like to see us go to two, three more club tournaments where you can charge five hundred admission. You can up your admission charges for people because they're coming from all over. My grandson played club ball twelve years ago or so and it, five and ten dollars was not even heard of back then. You paid more. The teams paid five or six hundred dollars to be in it. You're not talking local people, but this would be a way for us to make some money to pay for.
Your, your, your expenses, Mr. Schneider, are gonna go way up as well, even if you're charging five and six hundred dollars to do it. I mean, we, we gotta be there. I mean, I, I'm not comfortable with, with. Taking someone's money and then just turning the keys over to them for, for the weekend. It just doesn't work like that. So, I mean, our fifty hour week in mid-July or mid-June goes to a seventy hour week. And so that's, you know, that's thirty hours of overtime to the city. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know. But what that really looks like, um, I don't know. Uh, I, I think there's, the expenses are gonna go up. You might make some, some money through entry fees and running the fields to, to somebody, but that's, I don't know. You might end up with a bottom line that looks pretty similar to this though, um, once all said and done.
You know, the club ball scene is so diluted now. There's club ball tournaments everywhere. You know, what's the attraction to come to Waseon way out here in northwest Ohio?
I tell you, you're not in a big city, easy to get to. If you have good fields, people go.
Or he's gonna say, they're playing Toledo.
That was a determining factor. We're not gonna play intercity ball. We're going here because the field's in a safe place and it's, it's a nice facility. People recognize that after a while. If it's a well-run tournament, they will come back.
For sure.
But we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not running the tournament in that sense. We, we've had outside organizations come in. We had, we had two tournaments scheduled, um, this summer that they, they on their end canceled. I mean, some of the, to some degree, these organizers of these tournaments are a little bit kind of flying by the seat of their pants. They're trying to put on a tournament and they don't know until three, four days before the tournament starts exactly what they've got. So, A, that makes things difficult on our end to know how, how do we stat? Like, how many fields are you using? How many, what divisions do you have? There's, so we're, we're, we're open to that. And that is a case where there is a rental fee paid, um, to come and use, use the park, which immediately in that case gets turned over to the city. So again, that's, that's an outside entity that's coming in and paying to rent the fields, um, for X amount of dollars. And that, that money gets immediately turned over to the city. We didn't have that this summer. They, for their reasons, they canceled the week of the tournament. Uh, that was kind of out of, out of our hands.
How long do they have to pay the rental fee?
We, I, I, we need to get a deposit from them two weeks, um, before the tournament starts and then they pay, they pay the balance, um, the week of, the week of the tournament. That probably could be looked at.
Do they, do they do their own gates and everything then?
They, what they charge as far as gate fees, what they charge as far as teams to play. We run the concessions in that case. Yep. They, we don't, again, to turn the concession stand key over to somebody, doesn't, doesn't really work. Um, I don't think you would want to get into that. So, we're, we're not opposed to that, Mr. Schneider. And again, we've had outside organizations, again, um, do we want to fill our, um, do we want to fill our calendar with that? We've got our own stuff going on, on the weekends and occasionally in the summer, I would like to probably have a weekend of myself as well too, so.
Do you have, um, have more softball leagues, men's, uh, church leagues on Friday nights?
We do that, yeah. We do, we do.
How many teams did you have this year?
We had eight.
It's seven.
Seven. Last year we had ten. That fluct, yeah, ten was.
And that's grown because when it first started, it was only three. So that's really not.
And that's what we do every Friday night from mid-May till about the beginning of August, probably, something like that. So, I mean, Monday through Friday, ladies and gentlemen, that park, um, through the summer is a, is a very, very active place.
And then it goes down on the weekends. I live across from it. Empty. When we, when we used to went to Two Etted Monster and, and the department, it was originally Neil Groff, Aaron Tiplidi. The idea of bringing Aaron Tiplidi on as second person was so you guys could flex, uh, your schedules. So you're both not always at the same spot. One is gonna work in the evening, one works during the day. Does that go on at all?
I'm not sure that we, we, I mean, a little bit. Um, I'm usually the one that's, that's there first. Hugo comes in a little bit later.
Because you talk about that eighty hour work week.
It's, it's a little bit.
That eighty hour work week, Matt?
When I say eighty, I said. When I say eighty, I said seventy.
On that seventy-hour work week, maybe you wouldn't work during the day?
But who's gonna take care of, I mean, if I'm not working during the day, there's, but there's stuff that needs to be done. There's, it's, it's, we're, we're working while we're there. So, I mean, if-
And your guys' workload is gonna reduce, because you're not gonna be taking care of the facilities anymore.
To some degree, yeah. That's, that's, that's new and, yeah, that's new and being worked out. So, yeah, that, that should help, so that I'm not doing a job and a half instead of just one job.
So, we could get you down to a forty-hour work week, so we're not paying all that overtime that Donald Trump doesn't want to tax either, right?
Could, could.
I, I'm all about that. So, but my, my, my thought is that, one thing, we're handicapped out there. I don't know if you agree with this, Matt, but we're handicapped out there, because we can't, we don't have eight fields that we can run at one time for a baseball tournament or a softball tournament.
We're running eight fields for a baseball tournament.
How do you do that?
How do we do what?
Run that. Because like, let's say we-
We have four-
No, let's say we host a fourteen U tournament. Well, it's a twelve U tournament. We don't, we don't have eight available to us, do we? Because that one pony league size isn't appropriate for them, is it?
Well, that's right.
So, we're down to seven.
We don't really run a tournament where there's just, the tournament that we run is multiple age divisions.
And, and these sanctioning bodies that are hunting for tournaments, venues, that, maybe they wanna host a, a, a big tournament for twelve U. They come to us. What, they want eight fields.
We can do seven.
Right, right. We're just short that eighth field. And all the tournaments I ever go to, Matt, they're always running eight fields. Always.
I, I think, I feel like that's splitting hairs a little bit personally.
Shane, I, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I know they're on timetable. Is there any questions that you guys have for the WRA? Because we do have an event going on out there. I believe you have to be out there at six.
I'm going back out there to coach a soccer match.
Yeah, go play football.
Okay.
Well, I think the, the one thing that I wanted to make sure that we were doing is the, with the legislation, making sure that we were getting paid whatever it says. And I know last year we didn't. So, I want to make sure that that happens-
Hopefully at the end of this year.
Retroactively. And then this year-
As long as it's not, but it's not written in that legislation. So, that's something that I think we may have to look at, if council is wanting to charge our own kids for tournaments.
By the way, I'm just saying, from, from these things that's already there.
Right.
We were never paid last year, correct?
For the ones that were there, right.
Correct. So, I just wanna make sure that that happens. And then, moving forward, we don't have an oversight again. That's all I wanted to say.
I, I wanna say really quickly that as a, as a representative of taxpayers, that whatever we can do to have activities for kids in our community is a great thing, and get them off games and whatup, you know, video games and whatever. I think whatever we can do to support you in that. And the whole tournament idea is such a great thing for our city, and bringing people in and helping our economy. So, I don't know what the solution is to all the problems, but I just wanna say, I'm, I'm on board with those things.
And I personally would like to see more camps out there during the week, during the day. I mean, that, we all have our wish list. September, what?
Twenty-nine, Sunday to twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, seven o'clock, council, that's-
That's a Sunday night.
It's a Sunday night, yeah.
So, since I've been on city council, and I've come to the meetings, WR meetings with Matt, and my opinion, since Scott's not with us anymore, but I think the WRA and Matt and Hugo really work hard on making the system function properly. And Shelley, you guys don't get paid, do you? They're all volunteers, right?
They're all volunteers on the board.
So, it's as bad as the airport board. You do a lot of stuff for nothing. Thank you very much.
I feel bad. I feel, I mean, I, I think Matt started off things by pointing out something. I feel bad for Matt and Hugo sometimes, because they are sitting directly in the middle of the city and the WRA. And sometimes-
I think they work with the WRA.
And you, and, and I get the feeling that they work with us sometimes, too. And it's just, I feel bad for them sometimes, because they are pulled in two different directions.
I don't know. I think that everybody's got the same direction. It's my thoughts, Shane, that, that-
At, at the end of the day, we're, we're trying, we're trying to do and create programming and run it the best we possibly can, expand where we can, be welcome and open to new ideas. We're doing some things this fall we haven't done before. There's a running club. We're doing a softball clinic out there on Sundays and next. So, we're, yes, I, I, I don't, I'm not patting myself, but I, I feel like Hugo and I have the best interest in mind of these kids in this community, taking care of a, of a large park and trying to do the best job that we can daily. I really do.
But I think everybody's on the same page, trying to do the same goal. Don't you think, Shelley?
(cough)
Matt, really?
Absolutely, yeah.
I believe that from coming to meetings.
You know, when I, when I go to Walmart and I have a recreational parent come up to me and say, "Thank you for what you do for the kids, for the community. My son would never have played this, this or that without your, your encouragement." Well, that makes it worthwhile for me. I mean, that's, I go home and I tell my wife, and like-
And I, and I know- We, we wanna support you in that.
Yeah. And I know we've had cases of individuals in our city that didn't have the funds to let their kids play, or two kids in the family. And somehow, it's always happened, that the kids come first, that they get to play, no matter who they are.
Yeah, you can ask the twenty percent that are always missing the deadline.
And that, right?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't say no to the kids. We say no to the parents. We don't say no to the kids.
So, I think it's a great benefit. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we need to move on.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming, thank you for coming in. Okay, let's see, Department head report to make it.
Yep. So, a little farther down, you see a motion being made for the Magna Grip. We've got everything lined up, should we go that way? That would be a grant that we received for fifty-four thousand, and that would finish off the other half of the fire station downstairs. The fair went well for a fire and EMS for us. We were very busy. It was very steady. And we only really had one night where we had a mass casualty incident. It was a crash down the road from the fairgrounds. Lots of ambulances. Our community came together and helped us by bringing a staff, and that went well. And then, some of you may know, there's lots of new faces at the fire department, the billboards, and the movie theater advertising and all that. We have five of them in fire class right now. So, we've got lots of good things going on at the fire department. So, and we're just gearing up for fire prevention in October.
Questions for them? Two?
We will be participating in the Road to Wellness. That's coming up on October first. Out at the Senior Center, it's coming back to Waseon. It hadn't, went back, went over to Pettisville for the last few years, after some time at St. Casper's Church. But we're, we're back in Waseon at the brand-new Senior Center. That's put on by Family Services. Kind of a nice event, very big event. There's a lot of seniors that come out to, to, to that. Good information out there. And then, we've just finalized our date for Christmas for Kids this year. We'll be doing it on Saturday, December seventh. We'll hopefully be able to get the applications and stuff out here into this month, beginning of next month. But we're working to make sure that Walmart and everything could be on board for the December seventh date, so if we don't have that tonight-
How many kids did you have last year?
Last year, we did seventy.
And did you have enough funding for that?
Yes, yeah, we did.
Did you have, you had a lot of people sign up last year, though, right?
I think maybe like a hundred and ten was total. Yeah, we couldn't do, seventy was, was actually an increase over what we had done, just because we don't always know how many first responders we'll get. And we, we try to make it a one-on-one. We try not to double and triple up on, on it, so that we can still have that, that one-on-one connection. And everybody can, you know, chat and talk and do all that stuff while doing the shopping. So, seventy was a good number. It was-
The store's full.
It was very full. It started to get a little bit to where any more than that is probably gonna be too hectic. So, that's, that's probably the number we're gonna be shooting for again this year.
Questions?
The, the benefit of Senior Center, is that just for Waseon? That's for like-
That's all Fulton County.
Oh, okay. Nice.
You know, donations are respected.
Nice.
Write a check, hand it over. Some people have supported it for years.
An update on our Fulton Street water line. We are proceeding. We did come across something right in front of Huntington, an old handmade brick fire cistern that was underground that we ran into. So, we had to fill that up. But that was, that was interesting to see.
Get pictures.
I believe they did get some pictures. But to think that someone had hand digged that, hand laid all those bricks in there, and they're set for hundred, hundred and fifty years, still there and still, still filled with water, so.
Wow.
But we will be also taking the water line down the one hundred block of Jefferson Street to tie that up to the new while we're right there. And then continue on down Fulton Street to Walna. Once we get through that intersection there, we're hoping it's smooth sailing. We don't have anything else laying in wait for us. Also, just to give you, point out a couple of resolutions here. Resolution twenty-five and twenty-six are for OPWC grants that I had to turn in on Friday, but they allowed us to turn in the resolution after the fact. So, that's why it's on an emergency that if you, so I can get the paperwork into them before the end of the month, when they have their meeting for the Fulton County Regional OPWC Commission meets, end of this month. And then, twenty-seven is also on an emergency. That is the LPA bring-up between the City of Waseon and ODOT for resurfacing Fulton Street. I'd like to have that on an emergency, so that we can get the engineering going, because we have a kind of tight deadline. They want to do it in August of next year. So, gotta get the ball rolling now, so that we're not held back, because they won't fund us until we have the engineering completed, and that's all on us. And I think that is it, unless someone has any questions.
Oak Street was supposed to be done by the end of August, correct?
Yes.
And was there a penalty if they didn't get that?
Five hundred dollars a day. And then we are going through a final punch list. There's a few items that we need to have done to repair, like some manholes that need to be cleaned up, so that we can pop them open without causing damage and stuff like that. So, there will be, that will be assessed against them before the final.
That being-
And there wasn't a break on Oak? Someone watering on Oak and Prospect this morning?
I have not talked to that-
Didn't look like they, and the water was gone, so I figured.
It could have been someone emptying out for them.
I got a pullback there. I thought the same thing. Okay. Jamie?
Not much to report tonight, other than, you know, finishing up the August month end. And I sent those reports via email. Income tax revenue is still down six percent, or about the same for the past few months. We have gotten some good payments in this month, so it'll be a little better for my report beginning of October. Good night, honey.
Yeah, question for Keith. Keith, on the, that's all right. On the painting that, we got some street painting in exchange for using our property for parking lot for the, did, did they put some paint on our roads?
Yes. They did repainted Chup Avenue, and I don't know if it's got done yet, but they're also repainting Leggett Street from the golf course, all the way out to, for the storage of the paint at the old old building.
That's cool. Can you explain about that?
And in the future, if anybody ever comes in to talk to us, and you got them on a, a time that they have to leave, heads up about that would be great.
Sorry, I, I thought that that was, I thought someone had told you that. I apologize. I have to take ownership of that. I thought that they would be out of here by five forty-five.
I guess it's frustrating to me, because this is the second time that WRA and Matt and Hugo have been in here in my time here, that I've been asking questions to them, and I get shut down. The other time, Tom did it. This time, it's you. You shut me down, but then others continued to talk. And you don't interrupt them.
I didn't think I shut you down.
Yeah, you told me to stop, because I had to go.
No, I said, I asked if anyone had any questions, because they had to leave.
And I was in the process of asking questions.
Then you need to ask questions and not give them suggestions on how to run things.
We were having a dialogue. I think anybody else here was having a dialogue. What's so different about my dialogue?
There's nothing different about your dialogue change. I just-
Then after you told me to bring it to an end, why didn't you tell Harold to bring it to an end?
The agenda was about the budget, correct? You wanted to know about the Tini's budget. We did go off. We went off topic.
It's not a rhetorical question. What's different about me and Harold?
What did I ask? Did any of the council have any other questions for them, because they were on a time limit that they had to leave? I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
No, you told me to basically stop, because they had to go.
Did I tell you to stop?
You sure did.
Okay. If you feel that way, that's up to you. I'm sorry.
At staff, it was made noted that they were on, they had games that they had to get back to. And we were trying to figure out which one would be better between that. And that's why we created the before, four forty-five, to do the swearing-in, so they would have a little bit more time.
That was never mentioned to us.
Well, it was brought up, and I apologize that it wasn't brought up that they did have to leave. But we did give them almost a half hour.
But that's another good example of why they both have to leave. Why do they both have to go?
I think one was coaching and one's working. He said he was coaching the soccer?
Yes.
But when we went to two-headed person there, back in the day, that was the idea, that one would be not working during the day, because they're gonna have heavy evening hours. You know, because they're, they're, they have odd schedules. But, so I, I, I think there's opportunity for them to flex their schedules, and we don't end up with seventy-hour work weeks for them. Is that going on at all? So, they are flexing their schedule?
Yes, they are. They, there are times that they will work three hours one day and fourteen hours one day. They do a very good job of flexing their schedule. And if you would like to come in and sit down with me, Shane, I'd be more than happy to show you their time sheets and pull it right up on the program, and you can see. Now, there are certain times when they are having a tournament, yes, it's going, because one comes in at like six o'clock in the morning and starts working on things. Another one come in at noon and work late at night. So, there are times that there are a little overlap. And then we also use seasonal help whenever possible to keep their hours down. But you're more than welcome to come in, take a look at that. I'll be more than happy. Jamie can pull it up on downstairs. If you wanna go top water, Jelsey can do it as well.
Is that alarming to you, to hear that, through the operation of the Tini's tournament, that we received no benefit from that financially, but we only experienced expense?
Shane, I've been here forty years. We, as, in the police department, we don't get any money for doing the job down there.
So, that doesn't, that doesn't alarm-
No, it doesn't alarm me.
And really, when you compare the police department to a rec program, those really aren't the same things, right?
It's the same people paying the bill, paying their taxes.
There's still taxpayer money being utilized, and we do the best job we can to make sure that it's done proper. And no matter if it's public works, water, wastewater, parks, police, fire, it's still taxpayers' money.
Those are, those are services that we provide.
You're absolutely right.
Yes, for sure. And as a budget-
And including parks and rec is a service that we provide for our citizens.
And while a, a third-party entity is reaping benefit?
No, a nonprofit for-
Oh, their profit? Did you see it?
No, it's a nonprofit.
They made thirty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, they made thirty-three hundred dollars that they utilize to buy bases, they utilize to pay uniforms, to do other stuff through the program.
So, the city doesn't buy that stuff?
No.
But the, the city doesn't buy any of that stuff?
I'm not gonna say they don't buy any of the stuff, but no, they don't buy the uniforms. Uniforms are supplied by the WRA.
Because what I, what I, what, what I tried to do a few years back is to terminate our relationship from the WRA. Remember that?
Yes.
Yeah. And it didn't get legs with my fellow council members, because I think if we, if we did away with our relationship with the WRA, that would provide for more oversight, because right now we have no oversight over the WRA.
And if we did away with the WRA, we would also lose the nonprofit ability to raise funds and take in donations because the city cannot do that. They can't raise funds. We can't go out and, that's what, that's the one benefit the WRA has over us. It's like us utilizing the Waseon Foundation for certain activities because we can't raise funds for it.
But if, let's just play, for instance, what if the WRA said, we're done with soccer? We as a city have no ability to change that, do we?
Well, we could either, one, cut our ties, like you said, to the WRA, or we could start a city-run soccer program utilizing our people. But it would, it would be a more expensive program because we, the people that on the WRA side are volunteers. We would have to pay them because we couldn't utilize the volunteers.
So back in the day, the, the rec programming was taken care of by the city. Remember that? Do you remember that?
Not as long as I've been here. The rec program's been taken care of by the WRA.
No, before Al Horford, before that fellow. There was no rec program?
There was no rec program.
The money from the recycling center, he ran that. He came back over here and, and the city said, would you do this? And they used the funding of that to start the WRA. And then they, they created more, the only program that was out there that I know of was a men's softball league ran by Larry Lammon.
So the WRA was originally created to run the recycling center?
They just changed the name?
No.
Well, it was, it was created from the recycling center funds to open up a rec program for the city. Because at the time, Al Horford wanted to take care of the parks and not run a rec program.
I think in the beginning, we paid for our own churches, kid. We didn't have a check.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As long as I've been here, the WRA has-
It's no different than the Wahoos.
Are you worried about, are you worried about people going mad without grounds keeping?
No, it should lighten up their-
Right, it should, yeah. Yeah. A significant amount, right? They spend a lot of time on that ground stuff, don't they?
Well, more so Matt and Hugo, but yes.
So with them, they're on the board of the WRA or they're part of it?
They, they bring everything about what's going on to them. That's, that's their job. When I was on it with Neil, he would bring everything to them because that was his job.
Okay.
And then they made decisions with the income that came in from the city, the people who played on how. And they had, they had money invested. They had money in a savings account. They had their checking account. They have their bylaws.
Right.
Those were all created by people years and years ago.
So who's on the board of, oversees it now?
The WRA board.
Okay.
That's, that was Shelley and-
There's only four people on it now because they're not, they're not functioning with the president.
Correct. Okay. So then, is it a conflict of interest to have a city council member be part of the board?
No, they're representing. They don't get to vote. It's the same as Chamber of Commerce. We own the building. They are the business. They go out and get people to join the chamber, pay their dues once a year. Then they help to promote their business and whatever. But I'm the liaison from the city because it's in our city building.
Right, which I understand. But why, what's to stop us from having them be a member of the boards? That way we do have influence to that board. The WRA board.
We can't be a member and be a council member.
That's what I was just asking, you know.
You, there'd never be a voting board.
You can't.
You can't be a vote, voting. You are liaison.
We just observe, see the park board. We just go to, and you observe it.
What's the, this is because I'm asking because the cemetery board had a vote on that.
You do, on the cemetery board.
That's union though. That's the difference together. Okay, we need to move on. I've got things I gotta get done to tonight. Let's move on to Jamie, Tom.
Nothing really to report. I just would point out that ordinance 2024 dash three requests to be on emergency. That's the amending the code to include the zoning certificate, which is really a mechanism requiring folks coming in to start a new business or changing the use of their business to have to interact with the city. So Danny, the building code person can work with them and making sure that they're in the right, you know, there's no zoning issues or other issues having to deal with Wood County in terms of construction. So that we can deal with that upfront rather than them coming in, locating a business and then having to deal with them afterwards. So Danny's continuing to get inquiries and it's just been a real hassle for him because there's really teeth in the, what he can do right now in terms of authorizing people or counseling people. So that's why we have that one on emergency. The other one is just, the other ordinance is just to amend the tax code to require landlords to report their tenants each year on an annual basis to the tax commissioner.
And then you, you were working on a couple of different other ones that we never got resolved.
Just still working on those.
Still working, okay.
Haven't forgotten.
Tom's on it.
Parades, solicitation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for Tom at all about that?
Solicitation, solicitors.
We have one committee report and that would be park board.
Keith, I've got, I've got the minutes here. It was a pretty quick meeting. First matter that came up was the Fulton County Amateur Radio Hamfest. They want to use Homecoming Park, June 7th and December 6th of 2025. That was approved. They did, John Arps did note that December, that Homecoming Park is winterized. The pavilion is winterized. So they're looking at doing that possibly at Rotary if it works out for them. If not, it may be a little cold form underneath the outdoor pavilion in December. We discussed the pool fees. One thing Tom Ferkholder asked me to bring forward is to ask them about the possibility of having an option for the snack shack to be open during pool rentals. And we had discussed adding a twenty-five dollar cost for that if they want it to cover the cost, almost the cost of the people in there. And the selling of the concessions will cover the rest of the cost. We wanted to keep it a nominal fee so if they wanted to use it, it was an option for them. And the last thing that we had was discussion on the playground equipment. Asked them to recommend Walbash Park be the next set of playground equipment that we were looking at partnering with Rotary on to get that done. They agreed on that and also agreed to look at Homecoming, I'm sorry, Rotary Park for the one to put in a Nature Works grant for because that may be several years down the road before we get that ability to get the grant. And we felt that was the best location because it is income-based and it would be a better scoring park than some of the other parks. And that's all we had with no recommendations for council.
Did you, would you have to make a recommendation for that twenty-five dollar rental thing?
It's ju, it's just an optional thing. It's not increasing the actual fees on it.
It's policy.
Right, yeah, that's just, yeah.
All right. Let's move on to our first reading. Ordinance 2024 dash three is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon to include new section 1117A and declaring this an emergency. Tell Danny.
I declare an emergency on 2024 dash three.
I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance 2024 dash three on emergency reading moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Turina. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yeah.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final.
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2024 dash three on final reading, moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Simon. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2024 dash four is an ordinance amending the codified ordinance of the city of Waseon to include the new section 191.21.
First reading?
Second. Motion to place ordinance 2024 dash four on first reading moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council, Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2024 dash 25 is a resolution authorizing the mayor or her designate to prepare capital to, sorry, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring this an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to place resolution 2024 dash 25 on emergency reading moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2024 dash 25 on final reading moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Turina. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Resolution 2024 dash 26 is a resolution authorizing the mayor or her designate to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute the contracts as required and declare this an emergency.
I'll second. Motion to place resolution 2024 dash 26 on emergency reading moved by Council Simon and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Final. Second.
Motion to place resolution 2024 dash 26 on final reading moved by Council Turina and seconded by Council Chamberlain. Any discussion? Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay. Resolution 2024 dash 27 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement for the resurfacing of a portion of North Fulton Street and declaring an emergency.
Second. Motion to place resolution 2024 dash 27 on emergency reading moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
I'm excited about that legislation. Final.
Second.
Fulton Street needs it.
Absolutely.
Only north though. I'm working on this.
It's gonna be a sad trip.
Motion to place resolution 2024 dash 27 on final reading moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council, Council President Stickley. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, under new business, there is one thing that I forgot to say at the beginning of this meeting and I apologize deeply for, is to keep the family of Larry Booth in your thoughts and prayers. Larry sat on the planning committee here. Oh my goodness, I'm thinking it probably took him twenty years he was on. He was on when I was still in city council and he was such an asset to the city of Waseon. So that is one person I did want to talk about and I didn't get it out at the beginning. So just keep them all in your prayers. And under new business, we have a motion, we need a motion to set the fee for the zoning certificate to a hundred dollars.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to set the fee for the zoning certificate to a hundred dollars moved by Council Simon and seconded by Council President Stickley. Any discussion? Council Simon?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
And also under new business, we need a motion to approve the Magnum Grant.
I make a motion to approve the Magnum GRIP.
I'll second that.
The Magnum GRIP moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Turina. Any discussion?
I think it was had.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
I have nothing under old business.
I have something.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
I'm leaving October 15th and won't be back till the 30th. So I'm asking-
Where are you going?
Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi.
All righty.
So I'm asking the mayor to be, let me go. And I'd like Shane Chamberlain, since Shane, would you sit in this seat and go to staff meetings and that, please?
Yeah, I'd be too.
Thank you, sir.
How long are you gonna be gone?
Fifteen days.
Okay, good. Thank you. All righty. Now, old business. And we just need to pay the bills and then go home.
I'll make that motion. Let's pay the bills.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Chamberlain. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Turina?
Yes.
I forgot about you. Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn, I say yes.
I'll second.
Let's go out and get some dinner.
Motion to adjourn moved by Council President Stickley and seconded by Council Turina. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.